Good morning. They were one welcome to our Wayne County Board of Commissioners Agenda, pre-agenda meeting for June 2nd, 2020. We have, as you know, it's been a tough couple of weeks for this board in this county. We'll have more to say about that at our 9 o'clock meeting. Keep in mind that we are still in Phase 2 of the Governor's Plan for COVID-19, and we have no more than 10 persons are allowed in one place. As such, the public may view this meeting in the jury room on the third floor or on WayneGov.com. Those wishing to speak during public comments or public hearings should wait in the jury room until they are escorted to the meeting by Wayne County Sheriff's Office Deputy. I did want to let the public know that because of security reasons, the public hearing and public comment section, whoever speaks, comes up to the podium, does not have to give their address and phone number. They only have to give their name, but they have to, they have to give their full name, address, and phone number to our clerk of the board, Ms. Carol Bowden. We have to have that record. So for security reasons, we are making that change effective today. Today, our invocation is by Vice Chairman, Mr. Joe Daughery. Our pledge of allegiance is by Commissioner Aiko Marti. We have the approval on the minutes from May 19th. Discussion and adjustment of the agenda. Ms. Trennecut.
Thanks, Ms. Chairman. We do have one walk on today. It would be the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority rate increase. They've asked that be submitted back for consideration.
Let be under?
We can put that under new business.
New business?
Yes, sir.
Are they making some formal presentation?
Yes, sir. We can do that as number three.
Good morning, old Mass One.
I'm looking.
Yeah, I like your access.
Thank you. I'm a little dazzled at some point.
But that's the only thing we have this time. Okay.
She was talking about?
No, there you go. Thanks. Then after the agenda, we do have some special presentations. Motion to adopt Resolution 2020, 2020, or 21, resolution awarding service weapon to Deputy Garrison Nance. Number two, motion to adopt Resolution 2020, 20, a resolution honoring the life of Donald Milton Gray. And number three, motion to adopt Resolution 2020, 22, a resolution honoring the life of A. Joe Gurley III. And I believe Commissioner Aiko will be reading that for us.
You're going to read Buffalo's, right?
Hadn't the family requested that Chris Curtis is going to read.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Then we do have the open broadband update. We will be doing that remotely. They will be doing that by remote. So they do have a presentation they'll do remotely. And then after that, at 9:30, we'll have a public hearing. Public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed budget for Wayne County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, which was presented to the board on May 19, 2020. And again, we do have copies of the budget are on file and also online. We cannot take action after the public hearing, but we can take action 24 hours after the public hearing for approval if necessary.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Have you actually given your synopsis of the budgets? What do they call that? The message or whatever?
Yes, sir.
You have?
Yes, sir.
You already?
You sent it out.
Well, you sent it by email, but you hadn't actually presented it.
I have that today.
You are going to do that?
Yes. Yes, I've got a small PowerPoint, and I'm going to read the budget message.
All right. So during the public hearing?
Right.
You're going to do that?
Right, right before. Yes, sir.
I just didn't recall you doing that.
Make a formal presentation.
That's right.
Right, right, right. But yes, sir.
I got the email, and I did read it.
Right. But I want to do that today. I'll read the summary of the budget. I've got a small presentation to talk about us and what we are.
A synopsis.
A synopsis, yes, sir.
There you go. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Then we have public comments. Again, public comments, we have a maximum of 30 minutes for public comments, limiting individuals to four minutes each. Then Appointment Committee.
Yeah, we have something to vote on. Ms. Aiko, right?
Yes, yes, sir. We have, well, we.
From last week?
We do. We recommended at the last meeting, other than we have delayed the one for the appointment for the ABC Board. We will, we need to do a little more research on that, and we will act on that one at our next meeting. But we also have, we also have three more appointments that we did recommend at the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And then after our Appointment Committee, we do have our consent agenda, and we'll begin with budget amendments, and I'll turn that out.
First budget amendment is to the Register of Fees Office. They have overcollected revenues. We also have to appropriate funds that must be sent to the state. There was a question during the agenda review about that percentage. It's a little less than half that we have to send to the state for those fees. So it's pretty significant. So our fees revenue will be overcollected by about twice this amount, but we'll have to send half of that to the state. Okay? For the Health Department, they are requesting to reallocate $20,000 from professional services to their medical line item. This is to allow for a contract amendment with Wayne Women's Clinic.
Ms. Chairman, if I could go back to this?
Yes, sir.
So my understanding that if you're sending a little over half, then we should be getting a little less than half, so around $60,000 should have come to the county. Is that correct?
I might have mistaken. If I did, I'm sorry. We send a little less than half to the state, so we get a little more than half that we get to keep.
Okay, so we should be getting around $70,000?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
So the Sheriff's Office, we are requesting to anticipate and appropriate $93,165.05. This is for seized property monies received.
Let's get one.
I did the Register of Fees, then the Health Department, $20,000, and then Sheriff's Office. Okay. So I'm on page 22 in your agenda packet. For the Sheriff's Office, we're requesting to anticipate and appropriate $312.50 for controlled substance tax monies. For the Sheriff's Office, we are asking to anticipate and appropriate $14,210 in insurance proceeds. This is to finish up a claim where a vehicle was totaled.
Excuse me, just a minute. When I read that, I asked the sheriff, was the deputy okay?
Yes, sir, but that deer didn't make it.
You may sauce it up?
I was going to ask the same question.
But that deer didn't make it.
On page 26, for Social Services, they are asking to reallocate $15,000 in both their revenues and expenditures to account for some additional expenditures in the Client Transportation Medicaid Line item. They had two additional clients using the monthly emergency transport. For the Senior Center, we are asking to anticipate and appropriate $3202 in donations received this fiscal year. We have another one for the Senior Center. They have received funds from Duke Energy in the amount of $657. This is for the Operation Fan Relief that they provide to the senior citizens during the summer. We have another one from the Sheriff's Office that was also for controlled substance tax monies. You had one earlier. This is for $1,694.72. For the Detention Center, they are reallocating $4,500 from supplies and uniforms each to cover contract services for inmate meals in the amount of $9,000. During the agenda review, there was a question about why we would have an increase if the number of inmates have decreased in these last couple of months. And I did speak with both Thaxton and Ms. Herring, and they said that we were, we had over expended earlier in the year. Our costs were higher earlier in the year, and so they still have that difference that's got to be made up. But they did check on it for us. For the Detention Center, we're asking to reallocate $22,000 from salaries and wages to overtime, and this is to cover additional overtime that's needed in full-time detention center officers, I think, just to, because they have some vacancies there. For the Sheriff's Office, we are asking to anticipate and appropriate $511 in donations received this year. We have one for the Sheriff's Office for, this is a different insurance claim, $3,720.13. And this was also due to a deer accident, I believe, but this vehicle was not totaled. Your final budget amendment does not have a memo attached, and I apologize for that. That was my fault, because we did receive the memo. I just forgot to give it to Carol. I'll get you a copy for the 9 o'clock meeting. This is related to the 911 annual report that we file each year. This does not have to do with the call center, so this is a separate sort of issue. You all remember that we did purchase CAD system with Spillman, and we are still using that CAD system with Spillman for our 911 department. There was probably, there was a little over $300,000 that we claimed from the restricted 911 funds. However, after probably about nine months to a year, Chris Barnes and Tina West has really worked hard to try to provide every bit of documentation that they could to justify these expenditures. But the 911 board did not approve the full amount, and so we are going to have to cover some of that. In the same report, they are allowing some expenditures that we didn't anticipate. So the net effect is that we had to, we could find some of the funds that were disallowed within the 911 fund, but we used some fund balance appropriated, $63,211, to cover that disallowed portion. And then we did have some funds left over in our merit increase line item in the amount of $71,134. But I do want to commend Chris and Tina. I mean, they searched email archives and boxes of paperwork and just tried their best to get as much paperwork so that we could get as much of that expenditure covered as possible. And in the end, this was the final determination. So this will close out our June 30, 18 report. We're two years, I don't want to say two years behind, but we've just not had it approved yet. So hopefully, we can kind of put that one to bed and then move on to the June 30, 19 And that's all the budget amendments I have for you.
No further questions on that. Next, under consent, is motion to approve support of the draft environmental assessment for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. This has to do with the, let me make sure I say the right word, the air defense, let me make, where is it? The air defense contractors that they are looking at for Kinston, at the Kinston Regional Jet Port. Basically, the Air Force will be contracting with people to provide air combat training for Seymour Johnson Military Base, and they're going to be running a lot of sorties out of there. So it really is a big economic win for our region. So we do have a letter of support from the Board of Commissioners to Seymour Johnson. One thing we did put into the letter of support is if they run out of space for their contractors for the jet airplanes, that we have plenty of space over at the Wayne Executive Jet Port. So we'll be more than happy to take any overflow that they may have. But this really is a big win for the base and a big win for our community. It really enhances the mission of Seymour Johnson as, and really solidifies what they do within the Air Force. And again, I apologize. There's way too many acronyms in here for me to get correctly. Next on the consent agenda is motion to approve the NC DOT Division of Aviation aid for application for the Wayne Executive Jet Port apron pavement rehab project funding in the amount of $71,890. And again, this is for the design work to look at the improvements to the apron out at the jet port. And then?
This is basically engineering thing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then after consent agenda, if there's no questions on that, new business is discussion and possible approval of CARES funding from Wayne County. And I believe I sent you a draft of that. The board is aware we've received $3.2 billion, or excuse me, $2.3 million from CARES funding that is supposed to help the county supplement some of our costs that we've received due to COVID-19. And we are working on a plan right now that would include municipalities, that would include some free testing in certain areas of our community, but also the recommendation right now is we hold on to those funds. We don't allocate those funds all out right now because they're supposed to last us between now and December 31st. So we really don't know what's going on between now and December 31st, but it will reimburse us from some of the costs that we've already had, such as the additional hand sanitizers, the masks that we have bought, the things that we have done as far as cleaning machines, the cleaning that we've done. There's a lot of reimbursements that we will be able to get back from that, from this funding. And also, we will offer that funding up to $75,000 right now to the municipalities if they have had similar costs. We can change this budget at any time. This is a very flexible funding source, but we're being very conservative with the funds moving forward, again, since it's supposed to last us another six months, and we really have no idea what may be coming down the road.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Then it is, there are restrictions on these dollars that can be spent just in anything that's COVID-related.
There are restrictions. We have given some guidelines to the municipalities. They still have to follow the unified guidelines, you know, for purchasing. We still have to, we're responsible, the county's responsible for how the funds are spent, and we have to make sure that they are spent within the UG guidelines that is outlined by the purchasing with the federal government. So we have told those requirements to the municipalities upfront that what the expectations are. But again, we're trying to work with UNC Wayne right now with respect to some free testing and where those sites may be. We're looking at, you know, right now, to start at about $200,000 to look at testing, so we're trying to get that out. And UNC Wayne's been great to work with, but also, you know, we're trying to hold back, not knowing what the next six months may bring.
Thanks for that clarification. I didn't want the public just to think that we could spend it on.
Right. It is not, you know, one of the big questions we've gotten from like the municipalities, it is not to fill the revenue gaps.
Right.
You know, it is not to fill revenue gaps from nonprofits in our community. It's not any of that. This is really for direct cost related to COVID.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Did I understand you to say that UNC would be doing the testing?
We were trying to work out an agreement with UNC, yes, sir. UNC Wayne.
I thought that was some discussion with Goshen.
We're, UNC was the better deal.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you.
So we're going to try to increase testing?
We are, and really provide testing in areas, you know, free testing throughout the county. So we are, we're working on that plan right now. Again, I'll be very honest, I'm starting very conservative at $200,000. We can change that if we see the need is there, you know? So you have that authority to adjust the budget, and we have that authority to ask the state for approval. Why we're asking for approval from this is that the state is requiring that this be submitted to them for approval by June 15th.
I've had a couple of doctors here in Wayne County call me. They're in the belief that the more testing we do, the better our numbers will look overall. As a matter of fact, both of these doctors are in favor of doing a 100% testing for the citizens of Wayne County, which may or may not be feasible. But I know we have a new Health Department Director, Dr. Weiss, coming on. Maybe something that we might want to consider, making sure that we do as much testing as we can, because these two doctors have told me directly that it makes your numbers go down the more testing you do, because you can also say that there's a certain number of those have gotten over it. So you can, you can make those numbers look a lot better for the county, which then, which takes out the news correctional and some of the long-term facilities, and you can get down to really what our numbers are. So just something that was suggested.
One thing we're also doing as well is we're putting some money aside for our volunteer fire departments, $20,000, because they've had some additional costs on PPEs as well that we're trying to help them address as well. So again, this is what really just direct costs of what we have or what we participated. You know, this is really not for salaries. We've been told that salaries really need to come from FEMA. So if there's salaries that are associated with COVID, some communities are using this fund, these funds, but what we have been told is go FEMA first, conserve these funds as much as possible. Allison, did I miss anything?
No, sir. I just wanted to, the exception with salaries would be if, like, for instance, the amount of paperwork that's going to come through because of this and because we're having to handle it for the fire departments, municipalities, we will probably increase our part-time person, increase her number of hours specifically for management of COVID paperwork. And then I'll have a full-time person that will kind of oversee that, but that would be reimbursable under the CARES Act. So that type of salary, if it's specifically dedicated to the CARES Act. Now, I don't think we can go hire an administrator like we do David Harris for some of those hurricane relief programs, but if we have somebody that's dedicating a specific number of hours for that, we can.
Right.
The other thing that I would just say is there's 100, and I believe it's $150 million reserved of the federal funding at the state level that has not been appropriated yet, that the state intends to distribute to counties for revenue replacement if the federal government would change their guidelines on that. So if you have an audience at all with anyone that could, I mean, that could have some influence on that, the money is sitting there in a pot, and the counties would very much like to see that come our way, so.
Right. And especially if you, if you talk to our smaller municipalities, those who are really what are hurting bad, perfect examples Fremont, you know, when you cannot cut off utilities, people have not been paying utilities for, you know, two or three months now, but they're still having to provide that service, and then they have that hole within their budget, their utility budget, that is just, is a mess for them. It really is.
Yeah.
But we would ask for approval of the plan. I think I've sent you a copy of the plan earlier. Would ask for approval of the plan, and that's what we will submit to the state.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, how are those testing sites selected?
We haven't selected them yet. One of the things that we've looked at, and we've had a couple of questions from churches, we will probably look at public sites, you know, because we don't want to put one church having above and up, but we want to get them out throughout the community, especially the areas that do need it. So, but we'll, we'll make sure we share that information with you on the testing sites. But we're working on that now, and, you know, the dates and times with our UNC. Okay. Yes.
A question about if a church is interested in having as a site, should they just express that interest to you, and is that a full?
We've had a couple of churches already express the interest, and it was, we've had this conversation with staff. It's kind of difficult to pick one church above another church, because, you know, I don't want to pick Baptist over Presbyterian's if they're right next door, or Presbyterian's over Baptist. So what we talked about doing is just really in public places that everybody can reach. One of the things we talked about was maybe looking at our EMS stations, because EMS stations, you know, are eight minutes from everywhere in Wayne County, so they're probably centrally located sites as we have public sites, or we may look at, you know, specific places, like if we could use community buildings, Mount Olive or community buildings here in Goldsboro.
Mr. Chairman, can I put in two cents worth?
Yes, sir.
So what we're saying is they couldn't go to church, but now they want to use a church for testing site. Think about that one a minute.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Doctor. Is it my understanding we're talking about a tent and a drive-through type of testing? We're not talking about actually coming within the building and setting all up within a building, are we?
We haven't figured out exactly what UNC can, what their capabilities are, so we're working on that through them right now. But, but more of the drive-through type testing is what we're looking at.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Back up to the chairperson's comments, are we interested in testing to determine a number for county reasons? Are we testing to make sure that we don't have citizens carrying the germ and they don't know it? What's our rationale?
I think there's just a fear out there from the general public that they may or may not have it, and they just want to be tested, and they have no opportunity to get tested, so.
So the goal is to test every person in Wayne County?
No, there, we would not have the funding to test every person in Wayne County. I'll give you an example. We looked at, we did have a bid from one group, 15,000 tests were about $500,000.
Oh, my God.
And we just do not have, you know, again, we don't have the funding to do testing for all, because we still have a lot of costs, and there's a lot of uncertainty out there within the next six months of what costs the county or the municipalities may or may not have. So we are being very, very, very conservative with the expenditures upfront, because, you know, we do have to expend the funds by June or January 1. And we may be able to loosen up some of the spending, you know, November, December, but right now, not knowing, we're just. but right now, not knowing, we're just keeping it very close for our best.
Mr. Chairman.
There, there are new recommendations made by the Medical Society to test without symptoms that would, that would cause you to do that, that I'm, that I'm aware of.
There's company, there, there's count, and what, what we looked at.
Nobody in UNC system is advocating that at this point that I know of.
There, there's a lot of counties in what we tried, there's really no guidelines for this. There's not a lot of guidelines, is that, we have looked, and this is reason why it's taken us so long to get to this point. We were hoping to get some guidelines from the state, we were hoping to get some guidelines from other counties. It's all across the board of what people are doing. But one of the consistent thing was, was testing. So that's the reason why we did throw a, a piece of testing in, into the mix.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mike.
Yeah, who, Mr. Dard, what's next?
It don't matter. I guess, you know, we're, we're talking about numbers. The more you test, the more positive cases you're going to come up with. And that's not the number we need to look at, the number we need to look at is, is the percentage. If you want the percentage to drop, the, the more you test, the more positive cases you're going to find.
Right.
So that, we don't need to look at that number, we need to look at the, the percentage, you want, the percentage to drop.
I'm, I'm sorry, I must be still, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dard, what's next, sir?
Go ahead, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Dard.
I, I think we need, since we opened up this catalog, I think we need to, um, put some reasonable expectations out here. The testing, there's no way we can test everybody. And I assume that there would be some criteria. My understanding is that there would be some criteria in order to receive one of these tests. You're going to have to have the symptoms in order to qualify to get tested. Not everybody can just drive up and go to be swabbed and get a test.
Right.
So let's, let's try to explain that a little bit.
That's why we're trying to, we, and, and again, I, I apologize, we don't have the criteria set at this point. We've just really started working with UNC Wayne last week, and, and so it is, we're trying to get.
I understand, but I think that we need to send the message out to our community that we're not talking about just any and everybody randomly driving up and getting a test. You're going to have to have some symptoms, because we've got a limited amount of dollars here, and we can't test everybody.
Right, like I said, it, it, the, for 15,000 tests.
In other words, just because you have the curiosity of wondering whether or not you have COVID-19, you just can't drive up and be tested. Not only that, but if we test you today, tomorrow you may actually get COVID-19. So we can't test everybody every day, so let's have some reasonable expectation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dard.
Well, I guess, Mr. Dard, my, he'll share some light, because my question was, are we interested in numbers or are we interested in the truth? And the truth is, do you have it? Well, the numbers embarrasses the county, uh, you know, I, I, I embarrasses the nation. Whomever it is is concerned about that, told them. What I want to know is, is what is closer to the truth? What number does Wayne County have? What number, and when you talk about percent, what percent does it take for a counter to be in that danger zone where there's likelihood that you're going to come in contact with someone that has an active case? That, that's what my concern is, I, I always wonder when I'm listening to folk talking about, well, if you test everybody, you're going to come up with a high number. Well, I, I'm on the truth, whether the number is high, low, or in between. And, and that's probably, that's something that I'm interested in is what is the truth about what our number is, or what our percentage is, or what is the likelihood that we'll come in contact with somebody at the grocery store, the church, or just walk along the street? That's what, that's what my concern is.
Well.
Anyway.
My, my, my thoughts of this, my understanding is that we didn't, we need to test as much as we can, and we need to continue to test as much as we can in order to make sure that this, this curve that we have flattened stays flat. But one of my concerns is, is that this thing, this thing coming up, we may have a second round of this at some point, and my concern is, is that we still don't have a vaccine. I think we're going to see this testing going on continuously, and to, at least until we get a vaccine available. That's my understanding, so.
Any other comments?
We, we did a good job on that one, didn't we?
Okay, Mr. Dard.
Then next, our new Health Director, Dr. Brenda Weiss, will be here. She has had a busy week, as you can see, so she's really done a great job so far, and we're very lucky and, and pleased to have her. But we'll be introducing her to you. And then number three is our walk-on, GWTA, the Transit Increase with Don Willis will be here to make that presentation.
Okay.
And then County Managers' Comments, Board of Commissioners' Committee Reports and Comments, and we do have closed session.
Okay. Does any Commissioner have anything that she would like to add to this agenda for today? Okay, we have a closed session, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir. To discuss the location of a business in Wayne County and to discuss matters with your lawyers to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Have a motion to go in closed session?
Certainly.
Okay, everybody raise your right hand for approval.
We have time.
Okay, we're in closed session.